Hello and welcome to Restoring Our American Republic. I'm Chuck Benoit with The Nature of Things, where we are realigning God, government, and natural laws so that we might, well, restore our American republic. Please follow us on Facebook, on this Facebook page, as well as on YouTube at Restoring Our American Republic-R-O-A-R. And if you'd like to take part in the narrative, simply post your comments and we'll be happy to address them whenever they're relevant to the discussion. And you can help us be a voice here locally by liking and sharing this program. And I'd like to as well note that we will be expanding our live stream to other venues soon. We'll keep you posted. Sean Spicer, President Trump's press secretary in his first administration, asked a very interesting question today. He said, "President Trump is showing strong leadership, common sense policy, and wild popularity. Will MAGA live on after he's gone?" President Trump is doing amazing things, a lot of amazing things that we, the American people, have wanted done for many decades. But Spicer's question comes from his realization that President Trump is not in line with where the Republican Party actually wants to go. So who, he asks, in the Republican Party would continue his vision for America's golden President Trump, along with his big, beautiful bill, is calling America back to honoring the God of our founding, an honorable quest for sure. All of the statistics back a while back showed that when we kicked God out of the classroom, our education scores plummeted. And you might note that the quest for most governments is to control the people. And the best way to conquer the people, control them, is to keep them ignorant and let them self-destruct. Sound like anything going on today. I don't know. And this, of course, is what our government-run school system has allowed to happen. So my question for our state and our county is this: Are we interested enough in the golden age to actually participate in the renewing of our faith in the God of our founding? Think about it. And I'd like to do a quick shout-out to the Republican Liberty Caucus. They're having their monthly meeting tonight at the Main Street Bank, 1515 State Route 50 here in Clermont. Doors open at 6:00, meeting at 6:30. We meet upstairs. If you go into the building, that's the only way you're gonna get in. You're not gonna get in the front, the first floor. You have to go up to the second floor to do that. So with that, I would love to bring into the picture my good friend, Mike Levine of Glass House Media. Good morning, Mike. How we doing?
Hey, Chuck. Doing great. Thanks for having me on.
Super, super. And I wouldn't mind if you were interested in introducing our guest for today.
I'd love to, Chuck. Thanks a lot. You know, ladies and gentlemen, every now and then you find that diamond in the rough, that public servant who really served for the right reasons, somebody who is immensely knowledgeable. In this case, our guest is a Florida historian. I think he's working on his 14th book right now, served on the city council in Tavares for, I'm thinking, 20 years or so, and again, was very gracious and, in the interest of term limits, stepped aside for a while. And then, based on what was going on in Tavares, thought it was important for him to be on that city council and came back and ran again. So I would suggest to you that if you take a look at the personality profile and the life experience of our guest, City Councilman Bob Grenier today, you'll see what a public servant, you have a model for what a great public servant looks like and should be like and how they behave. And so Chuck, I'd just like to welcome City Councilman Bob Grenier to the show.
Hi, Bob. How we doing?
Hey. Oh, how wonderful, Mike. Thank you for that introduction. Hey, Chuck, how are you?
Doing great, doing great. So we thought we might kind of throw a little bit, kind of a wide-range question at you to get the discussion going. We're just wondering what you thought a few of the top things that affect the city of Tavares are and, you know, your opinion on them. So we're just gonna let you just ramble on as long as you want to.
Well, first of all, Chuck, I want to do say from your opening monologue, God is everything. People gotta realize God is everything, and we better put Him first. Glory goes to Him. So I'm glad you mentioned it in your opening, because God is everything. Tavares, it's a city that I have loved when I moved here. And I have to tell you something. When I moved here in 1998, I did not come here. I thought, what is my Realtor showing me here? He showed me a lot. And I said, man, this is a place, you're talking about tumbleweed going down Main Street. It was a place you went to jail. I just, I didn't know why he talked me into building a home here. But then I thought to myself, it was time to get involved. And this is like 1998, 1999. I says, man, this is a dead city. What to do? So I did get involved. And the story is a long story. I did get involved in a big way as part of the How Shall We Grow workshops and brought to the table, to the administration, that maybe we should build on a historic foundation, which we did. If you visit Tavares, you can see that we absolutely did follow that plan. So with that, I obviously got elected to the Tavares City Council because people liked the ideas of what I brought to the table there. Through the years, and Mike was right, after about 10 years, I thought, you know, because there's only two-year terms, I thought it was time. I had a few projects going that we're gonna finish up. The Tavares Fire and Police Department was gonna be there, my new Public Works Department. All this stuff was going forward and was gonna happen. So I thought, you know, time to bring in other people. They might have some ideas. I'll tell you something. Each year, I was kept being asked by the people of Tavares to come back. You need to come back. I don't like the direction this is going. And there were first a few things, like certain businesses, like sprawls starting to happen. A lot of things like that started, weren't, the wrong businesses were in town. Also, I did come back and I won reelection, thank you to the citizens of Tavares, because it is about them. And from that point on, I've been fighting and winning a lot of battles of what businesses should come in, what businesses should stay out. And of course, the big one is fighting the developers coming in here and just taking our wonderful city with its small-town charm and turning it into nothing but a concrete asphalt jungle. And that's one of the first things that I'm doing. And yet, at the same time, I believe I'm also fighting for that historic foundation. We got so many wonderful things happening here in Tavares, not only in our downtown waterfront area, but throughout the whole city there. And of course, got Public Works building done. I've got partnered with Laytech on that. We have a great Public Works director who really pushed forward on getting that project done. And of course, our Fire and Police Department are just wonderful. So those projects got done. Some of the seedier businesses are now out of the city of Tavares. And right now, the biggest thing right now is fighting that unwanted growth, the growth that you don't want happening to Tavares and all of Lake County. We are the county seat here in Lake County, so I like to be a model for the other cities. And becoming America's seaplane city was one of the biggest things that I was thrilled about. We dug into that history of seaplanes in the early dawn of aviation, and it's really worked for us here as a brand.
Chuck? I keep finding new things to do here while we're on the air. But thanks, Bob, for that. What else, Mike, I think you wanted to talk about, and maybe you can give us an idea of what we're talking about here. When we talk about a bundle of rights and property rights themselves, why don't you lead in with that? And then, Bob, would love to hear what you have to say about that.
Okay, well, I'm really, one of the really reasons that it's particularly great to have Bob on with us today is because the development question is sizzling. I was over at the county's comprehensive land use, kind of an opening introductory meeting, because the county is going through their comprehensive land use right now. And the company that's been outsourced to facilitate that project, 18-month-long project, said that they sent out a survey. And it's just coincidentally, a friend of mine found that survey on their Nextdoor app and sent it to me. So I filled out the survey, you know, what do you think should be happening in Lake County as it relates to development? And they said, within 10 days, they had over 700 responses to the survey. And they also said that 700 responses is a huge number of responses, even for a survey that's been out for 90 days. So of course, the chairman of our county commission, Leslie Campion, came on and just acknowledged that the reason that the company received 700 responses to their survey is because the people in Lake County, all over Lake County, from Lady Lake all the way down to Four Corners and up to Astor and all around, are very concerned about what I would suggest most Lake County constituents perceive to be the overdevelopment of Lake County, Florida, and the abandonment of the culture and character of our county. So as a real estate broker, and I'm trying to get through this real quick, it just astounds me that nobody actually quantifies what are private property rights, what is included in the proverbial bundle of rights. So I'd like to toss this over to Councilman Grenier so that we can kind of chat back and forth a little bit about the bundle of rights. Bob?
Well, and that's a good question, because what rights do you have with your property? You own this piece of property. What can I do with it? But at the same time, and you deserve to whether or not you want that peaceful thing or if you want to build a home on there, that type of thing. But the one thing is, I still believe, I sincerely believe, the people, the citizens of that community should have in some sort of say what the town should look like, who should be their neighbor, how that neighborhood should grow or that downtown area, whether there should be some conservation, whether there should be some development. I believe the whole city should have some sort of a say, at least button down some sort of, I don't know, I don't want to call them rules, because I think you should be able to do certain things with your property if you own them. But some sort of basis, some sort of plan, some sort of an idea that gives up people an opportunity to be able to live in a community without saying, like in my neighborhood, I already see because of some unwanted development on my block alone, it's just one city block alone where I live, and I already saw four real, for-sale signs go up because of that. So yeah, I mean, to me, I think that, yes, people should have a right to do certain things on their property, but I think there needs to be some sort of plan and some sort of idea of how that community should grow and what it should look like.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you very much for your comment. But you know, I just want to take this to the next level a little bit. And you know, it's interesting, in South Lake County, Commissioner Parks championed Wellness Way, which is a sector plan. Sector plan is 16,000 acres or more. So my point to be, like, for example, I believe that the comprehensive land use plan should is, the state of Florida requires it to be updated every 10 years. I say the, especially in our hyper-growth mode that we're in right now, I believe that the comprehensive land use map should be updated every two years, which means that we're constantly working on it. And then what I would personally do, if I was, could wave a magic wand and make it happen, is I would take a look at the natural barriers, natural boundaries of our county, and I would do a similar planning process to what happened at Wellness Way, where the entire community gets to come to ongoing planning sessions, and particularly the property owners themselves have a vested interest in how the communities are developed. So that way, we get the stakeholders, which I'm gonna define stakeholder as a property owner, and they get to come around the table and talk to each other and say, what is our vision for this community? And then I've got 100 acres here, and I've got 10 acres or five acres over there, and you know, take a look at the characteristics of those properties and come up with a mutually agreeable plan for those, I'm gonna, I use the word sector plan, but you know, 16,000, it doesn't have to be 16,000 acres, it could be 400 acres, it could be whatever the natural boundaries provide. And the development plan is walked out together as a community with all the stakeholders involved. Bob, what do you think?
Yeah, you're absolutely right. And see, and you just said it better than I did, where the community needs to be involved in what happens with that acreage, what happens to that property there. And you're right, two years, because that makes that two years for comprehensive planning means that you are constantly working on it. Things are changing too rapidly. 10 years? I mean, 10 years?
Right.
Somebody could, and then, you know, you got these developers coming in here, says, oh, you know something? It fits in with your comp plan. Well, no. Where does it fit in with the comp plan? You tell me where this, what you want to do on this piece of property fits in with this comp plan here. I don't see that glass apartment complex that is eight stories tall on Lake Island Mayor on the comprehensive plan anywhere, that kind of development anywhere on the comp plan. So it's something that constantly needs to develop and also, or to be looked at and planned out, but also at the same time, it continues to make the citizens give a vested interest into it, into their community, into what, how they should grow. It keeps them involved on a daily basis almost. And when you have a two-year plan, that every time it changes, they know that right away, they're gonna go and they're gonna continue to fight for the life that they chose to live, whether it's after retirement or a family coming into a community like Tavares, let's say, and say, how should we grow? What should we look like? I like this community. Instead of what's happening down US 27, you know, you look from the top of the Citrus Tower, now all you see are rooftops there. That wasn't planned out at all. There was no thought, nothing given to that, and no patience, too.
That's correct. So Bob, I'm gonna respond to what you just said by saying that this is a function of leadership. So if your city council, your county commissioner is a housekeeping job, we just pay the bills, that's one thing. But that is not leadership. And I'm gonna say this to you out loud, Bob, that since I got involved in Lake County politics in 2010, I've been beating the leadership drum. And the local officials tell me to my face, no, that's not really my job. I'm a ministerial person. I told them that I thought that the pro-NBA basketball players, we held them to a higher standard than we hold our community leaders. And they said, no, my job is to collect the taxes, my job is to run the algorithm for property tax rate, you know, for property values, my job is to do whatever it is they're tasked with doing. But I disagree with that. I think it's a leadership situation. Point number one.
Can I comment on that real quick? You are absolutely right. Constantly, I am constantly saying, the city council members need to be coming to this council, and bringing the ideas. The staff can do research and what have you and assist. We have Horizon Teams. But your, our job isn't to come every other Wednesday and say, and just vote on something or prepare a budget or what have you. We need to take leadership roles. We need to come to the council with the ideas. We need to say, this is what has to happen with our, we have to take, if you're voted in, you need to be the one that has to come up with it. You just can't sit back and say, oh, boy, it's that second Wednesday of the month, I gotta go vote on some of the things that the city staff came up with? That's not, that's not leadership. You gotta...
Exactly. So let me take this to the next level, Bob. So when we start doing our comprehensive land use plans and zoning maps and stuff like that, every two years, instead of whatever the schedule is, I don't know what the cities are required to do, but when, you know, community involvement in the process is critically important to good citizenship. And I understand that if the constitutional officers came out every year and did a budget review workshop, they may not get a lot of attendance because people don't like the granular nature of accounting. But when you start putting up roads and bridges and waterways and doing stuff like that, the people are very interested in that. So if you, and I, and let me just say, well, on a little segue off of that, you know, a long time ago, and I'm sure you're gonna remember this, Bob, we used to have Lake County Days, where the citizens of Lake County went to Tallahassee and lobbied our legislature, right? But now we said, you know what? I'm not sure we want to know what the citizens of Lake County think. We're just gonna hire a lobbyist.
Right.
How is that working out for us?
Yeah, that's not working out good, good at all.
Right. So my point to recap is that if we would do planning in the public square on Zoom calls in the evenings, when people can participate and put a marketing plan behind it, then we will get more civic involvement. And I'm gonna suggest to you that the more the citizens of our county and cities and counties are engaged in the process, the higher their prosperity is gonna be, because they're motivated, they feel a part of what's going on, and they do better at their job. They open new businesses. They believe in what's going on in the county. But if people don't believe in what's going on in their cities and counties, they go the other way. They bail out. They become disconnected from what's going on, which makes them less prosperous citizens, Bob.
Absolutely. And you know, the tough thing is, is the new citizens who are barreling into Lake County right now, all those new citizens who are, they're not getting involved. They're coming here for whatever reason, they're coming here, and you're not gonna really get them, I mean, those brand-new, get them involved in the planning process, in the comprehensive plan process, because they're new citizens. They're just kind of coming in, they see cheap housing, they see, they like the city atmosphere like 27. So that's the tough thing. That's why I feel like back when we, in 2006, when we started the How Shall We Grow workshop with former Mayor Nancy Clutt, everybody got involved. We were at City Hall, and there were dozens and dozens of people, of businesses, of the community involved in that, and How Shall We Grow? The citizens need to take involved. And you're absolutely right. Even now, where is the citizen involvement in How Shall We Grow? It's gone. The citizens should be able to get on buses and go up to Tallahassee and let them know. Our representatives who represent us, our elected officials, no, they're up there making decisions based on what they can get out of it. I'm sorry to be blunt, but that's what they're doing. And they're not taking any, they might say they are, oh, I'm coming to your town. You guys want anything, just let me know. It's not that way.
Chuck, you have some comments?
Yeah, well, you guys are doing a really great job of putting some interesting flair onto that. I thought maybe our next topic really kind of flows out of that, and that is, we're talking about the, we thought about talking about the state usurpation of local rule. Now, maybe you guys can kind of push this maybe a little bit farther, and you've kind of already kind of brought the state into it. But how much more can we discuss in regard to what Tallahassee is doing to affect Tavares and other small communities, smaller communities?
Let's let Bob start with that.
Sure.
Yeah, it's a great segue into what we were just talking about there. There are certain things, and of course, there was a period of time there, Mike, we were fighting that the Live Local Act. And I still say, there's still people out there that I don't understand, some elected officials that think that's an okay thing. I can't get past that the elected officials up in the state are telling me, who represent the people, voted people, say, Bob, this is what, how we want to grow, this is how the community we wanted to live in. I don't want next door to me being this, you know, eight-story-tall building. I bought this land so I have the view of the lake and what have you. So you got these people, elected officials throughout the state, who don't care about Tavares, couldn't care one less, are from Jacksonville or something and want to relieve some of their housing projects or whatever it is, their development, send them over to smaller communities like us by telling us, sorry, we don't care what you think, this is what's gonna happen in your town, this is what's gonna happen in your city. Just the fact that they took that power away from me, represented in the citizens, I can't go for it. I gotta fight something like that. And it's just sad that they actually stood up there in Tallahassee, in those legislative chambers, and telling us and made law to tell us how we should run our cities. Horrible.
Well, just to add to it, Bob, it's getting even worse. Since Live Local was passed, the House and Senate have put forth legislation stating that all agricultural land is at unlimited density, right? Unlimited density on all agricultural lands? I mean, if you want to create an urban Florida, that is the fastest way to do it, okay? So let me just, let me just go back to my previous point, because let me say something to you, Bob. All vacuums get filled.
Yeah.
This is key about leadership, because when Tallahassee comes down and says, this, we are mandating that all agricultural land in your county has unlimited density, and you have nothing to say about it, the correct response to that is, no, we have a very clearly defined community plan that we've been building on for decades, and this is what we're gonna be doing in Lake County, Florida. And if you try to shove this down our throat, we will find legal recourse against the state of Florida to prohibit you from jamming your developer-friendly, money-mongering policies down our throat. That would be the response to that.
It is. It's the perfect response to it, because Lake County was such a big agricultural county, and we're losing it. And we're actually in the process right now with a couple of locations right now that are just wonderful locations, and, hold on, it looks like somebody's coming there, but wonderful locations that I just had to tell one of my guests here to...
Exactly, sure, sure.
But...
We'll be off in a minute.
Fighting that right now here in Lake County, and one of them right here in Tavares as well. And so, yeah, to me, that agricultural, to ruin and take that agriculture and just saying you can put as much development on there as you want, Mike, you hit the nail on the head with that one.
So let me just add real quickly, Chuck, if you don't mind, because the people in Lake County are angry, extraordinarily angry. And the part of the solution, which I do give leadership in Lake County credit for, is the recognition that agricultural property owners do not have a right to land use amendments that max out their density. If you own agricultural property today, you bought it as agricultural property, you farmed it for however long you want, your kids don't want to be farmers, so you want to sell your property off to a multi-density, high-density multifamily apartment developer, no, no. The land use or zoning that you're asking for is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and the zoning map, and we do not owe you an amendment to the plan, Bob.
That's right. That's right. And you know, also, it's kind of funny, I always stop and think, Mike, you mean, there isn't somebody out there, if you want to sell your business or you want to sell that land, isn't there somebody out there who might want to buy that land? Did you ever go out and bother to look and see if somebody wants to be in that same agricultural business, want to be same?
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, there's gotta be, there's gotta be people outside that says, boy, I'll tell you something, 1,600 acres of ranchland? How wonderful! I want that! You know?
You know, Bob, let me say something to you about that. I'm a real estate broker, okay? So I'm inviting all the agricultural property owners out there. If you think that you'd like to sell your agriculture property and the county is not cooperating with you on a land use amendment, then call me, I'll find somebody to buy your farm. Because I'll tell you something, Bob, also, around the world, based on what happened with COVID and our lack of trust in pharmaceutical companies now, the Make America Healthy Again movement, people are gravitating to farm-to-table. And that's a big deal. Yeah, so the idea that we can take fresh agricultural products off of our farms and get them into restaurants, and this is a perfect opportunity also for me to bring to your attention, that when I was running for the seat, for the House District 26 seat, I met with the Florida Agriculture Coalition, right? And they're very interested in agritourism. Lake County is perfect.
It is. It's perfect for agritourism.
For agritourism.
And that is my big thing about this particular 1,600 acres is, I can't believe there isn't somebody out there who wouldn't want this, not only for what you can grow there, what they do grow there, but, you know, wedding venues, really scenic areas in that ranch that you can, I mean, the tourism to me is, would be huge. And that's why I can't understand why these people don't seek out, put out there that there's ranchland for sale that's going to stay ranchland.
Okay, perfect. If you don't mind, Bob, I'm listening, and Chuck, I know you're, you're getting a little impatient over there with me, because I talk too much. But you know, back in the day, I think it was, do you remember, Bob, when the Real Florida Real Close slogan was created? Remember that?
Yes.
Exactly. Let me just tell you something.
Whatever that, right?
Yeah, well, let me just tell you something. At that time, I submitted a recommendation that said, Lake County is the outdoor living capital of Florida, home of the one-acre lot. That was like in 2014, right? And I'm telling you, Bob, that if we had adopted my slogan, instead of Real Florida Real Close, the people in Lake County'd be a lot happier than they are now. And that would have been a statement to the state of Florida, saying, we know exactly who we are in Lake County, Florida. We know exactly what our future is. We're developing our property in clusters. All of our citizens are involved in future land use planning, and we'd like for you to stay out of our county.
Yes. Yes. We don't need people outside of this county. Yes, we don't need people outside of this county telling us how we should grow, how we should look like, what we should develop here, what should we conserve here? All of these things need to be planned out. And again, let's do it every two years. That keeps the constant involvement of people.
Exactly.
This is how, you will hit the nail on the head. Exactly. Why not be Real Florida, Real Close? Do these people know what Real Florida is? Real Florida is conservation, it's beauty, it's greenery. Now, I'm not a tree hugger. I do expect certain beauty, certain development there to serve the people. But at the same time, everything seems to be getting wiped out. Why?
That's true.
Why is beautiful land on the Dora Canal being wiped out for cookie-cutter homes? That I could lay, I'm six feet tall, I can lay down flat, my head would touch one house, my feet would touch the other house.
Exactly.
I don't get that.
So we could talk about this all day long.
Yes, we can.
Let's bring Chuck back in.
Yeah, well, you know, something, you know, we've kind of gotten through our little 30-minute expose, did a great job. Bob put a lot of excitement and enthusiasm. We're going to have to have you back, that's all. We just have to have you.
Oh, anytime.
Come back and chat, and we'll come up with some other things that, that the people in Tavares and around Lake County would be very interested in. What I'm going to do is do a quick final promo for the Republican Liberty Caucus. They're having their monthly meeting tonight at Main Street Bank in 1515 State Route 50 in Claremont. Doors open at 6:00. We're upstairs, you're not going to get into it downstairs, you know, that's all closed. Hit the, hit the elevator button up and come and visit us, 6:30 to about 8:30-ish, 6:30 to 8:30. Look forward to seeing you there.
I just want to thank.